The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
This evening with the swearing in of the new town council and we're going to begin with the town council members in alphabetical order. So John Landry, could you please come up?
(inaudible)
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista.
(inaudible)
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do. Thank you.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge according to law as the member of the Farmington Town Council which has been elected to help God or find penalty of persecution?
I do.
And next we'll have Mr. Master Batista. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you face me, that you will faithfully discharge
From the material we were provided, that you're presenting a zone change through the heart of this area, running from Middle Road to South Road.
If I may jump right in there. So it's definitely not a zone change. It's a modification to the plan of conservation and development. And I'm really glad you brought that up. Because all it would do is if someone was petitioning for a zone change, it would give that person guidance as to what prospective uses may be suitable in this neighborhood and what may not. And in that interim time period between when the plan of conservation and development is amended, and when any given application comes forth, you have the benefit of all that additional information about what's going on deciding the suitability of it. So, yes, this is not a zone change. This is our guiding instrument.
But if people followed the guidance, it would change this area from less residential to more commercial. That's the thrust of this.
Well, you have significant commercial uses already on Munson Road. You have them already on South Road. And again, I'll defer to Rebecca, but the notion is a floating zone. So you'd never want to create a situation where a single-family resident was in existing non-conforming use within a commercial zone. That's a nightmare. But you could create a floating zone that's above the property, that in the event that the town saw it suitable for any given commercial development, it could drop that down onto a specific parcel. You'd call it, you know, the zone would have a name. It would have permitted uses.
If I may just add to that, the recommendation is not just for commercial. The recommendation for the whole area is medical office, commercial, or high-density residential, similar to what's already existing in the area in the form of Yorkshire Village, even Omara Farm, Omara Ridge.
All right. I was glad to see that you brought the neighborhood into this discussion and allowed them to have their views heard. The plan that you presented called for a sidewalk around the whole area. Was that notion accepted well by the neighborhood or not?
Definitely. It was at their suggestion.
Okay, good.
And their strong request that the town address that issue sooner than later.
Now, in addition to this particular triangle, there's been suggestions for more pedestrian-accessed, non-car areas to allow people to either walk or bike through other areas surrounding the campus. Do those sort of changes, are they included in here as well, or is that separate?
I think some of the recommendations you'll see are completing the pedestrian network, traffic calming measures. There's a lot of concern from neighborhood residents regarding not only traffic volumes but speed in the area. So, and there's some discussion, not just of on-street sidewalk network, but also connections between existing developments and future developments. So there are some recommendations specific to those kinds of issues.
If I may also add, the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission made it clear last night that he wasn't satisfied with our, what we had done so far in that area, and he wanted to see more of it. But I'll also say that, you know, we wanted to see how this is received at all. And if it, you know, if it had some traction, then yes, there's a lot that can be done in that area. And we'd be anxious to move in that direction.
Good. Thank you.
Other?
Amy?
I'll go. Does this take out some of, with this plan, will this take out some of the spot zoning issues? That type? I don't know if I asked that question correctly, but does...
I don't think, you mean, things that you perceive to be existing?
Existing?
No, I don't think it would, because it's not going to change the zone of anything.
But the goal is to reduce the amount of rezoning that has occurred with no real policy behind it.
Right.
Because that is what has occurred. There has been significant rezoning in this very small area, all done by private petition, and all done absent a plan that gives you any strong policies by which to judge the merits of that rezoning.
So this will clean up?
This will give you that policy guidance.
Got it.
If you look at what's been done out there over the last 20 years, and I'm the culprit, virtually everything was a zone change, with the exception of 399 Farmington. So, I'm trying to avoid that here, because that was a very different situation. You had one developer who controlled it. You know, we were local. We made it all work. It all fit together. We knew how the pieces when we're planning the next one. When you have this many different owners, I think the existence of a plan, the importance of that is much higher.
I would agree.
John?
Well, thank you for coming out tonight, braving the weather. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. When you talk about this floating zone, are you really, is it really essentially just an overlay of another zone? Is that kind of how I should look at that? Are we, you know, which I understand doesn't exist yet, but is that, is that kind of what you're getting at?
Sort of. The recommendations were to establish some parameters, so to, in order to try to avoid leapfrogging of development into really low-density residential areas, you would establish some criteria that a developer would need to meet before you would actually land a zone to enable either medical office or a high-density residential development. So the idea of a floating zone is that you establish where it may land, you establish the criteria that needs to be met in order for it to land, but that underlying zone is what governs the property until that floating zone is landed. And that is one of the ways in which we are trying to protect the value of single-family residential properties in that until that other zone lands on their property, which presumably wouldn't happen until a developer is ready to go, they are assessed at R40 status.
Okay, so the existing land would be, continue to be assessed at R40, however, this other zone would sit there, and when they established, when the developer established the criteria to TPZ, then that zone change could come into play?
It would be the TPZ's criteria. When the developer demonstrates that they have met the criteria, they could apply to land the zone.
Okay. And approximately how many residents did you send? I'm trying to get an idea of how many residents are in this zone, residential units. So how many, maybe how many notices did you send out?
Just around 100. You do have one multifamily complex in there, which is, I think, 28 units.
And that, so the 100 included the 28?
Yeah.
And then, how many, how many would you say showed up? I wasn't there, but...
Hmm.
Yeah.
Well, we've had a series of meetings. We've had a half a dozen meetings. So at all of the meetings, I don't know.
Half?
But we've also, we've reached out to people. We've met with people at their home that couldn't come to the meetings.
Okay.
I'm trying to think as I go around. Certainly, everybody on Middle Road, probably half of South, half of Munson.
All right. Well, I appreciate your efforts, and that is somewhat my neighborhood. I live around the corner from the neighborhood, but, so I, obviously, we all know it very well, but I drive through it every day, but I appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Amy?
First, I commend you on how you're doing this. You probably know that in another part of Farmington, we're working with the Gateway Commission to address the area near Parsons. The way we started was the charrettes, trying to figure out what the community wanted, and now we're working to go further. You need a plan, because if you don't, and you have all these different private interests, my humble opinion is it could turn out to be a mush-mash and not in the best interest of Farmington. My concerns here, it sort of goes along with John. You're going in, you're trying to reach out to the community, you're coming up with a plan, sort of not the government body. So my questions really relate on how it's going to impact those people. The first is, you've spoken to, it sounds like half, at least half of the people in that direct area. No doubt, traffic is scaring everyone. What were the, what were the primary concerns that you're hearing from the community?
Traffic was a high priority issue.
And what was your response to the traffic piece? What did you...
I mean, the plan of conservation and development sets policy guidance not just for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Ideally, it also helps establish some policy guidance for you and other boards and commissions in the town. So the response is to incorporate recommendations regarding street, traffic calming measures, getting the engineering department to take a look at some specific issues about guardrail placements and sidewalk placements, and, you know, whether sidewalks on two sides of the street would help reduce speeds, taking a look at the newly installed lights. There's a sentiment that they have actually increased speed. So there's a number of recommendations that are somewhat outside of the authority of the Planning and Zoning Commission to really implement themselves, but ideally, this is guidance for the entire community to work towards. Other concerns from the neighborhood really were that there has been a lack of a plan, there has been a lack of transparency on what the state has been planning to do in the area, and that there's just a great deal of uncertainty on what is the future for my property. And so we actually had a couple of residents last night speak in favor of having a plan that maybe some of the recommendations need to be tweaked, but speaking in favor of having a plan so that there's a little more certainty for the future of their properties.
Just along the same lines. And my worry, and again, this is not, I think, what you're, I'm glad you guys are stepping up to the plate. To some extent, maybe we should have been stepping up to the plate on this. But, you know, you're focusing on the 100 families that might be affected. If those 100 families in the end sell, and they're going to probably sell higher than they would market, on regular market value, because you want it now. So, I mean, that area now has more value than the rest of Farmington because of what's going on. It's the crowd, where John lives. It's the crowd beyond it that all of a sudden are going to be surrounding a heavily commercial area and how they're going to be impacted. So I guess my concern really is, are we looking out for the best interest of all of Farmington? And I guess somehow that we need to work more with you. I mean, you're a private group trying to plan for Farmington, and I'm just, I'm just trying to get my head around that. The other piece of it is how involved the state should be. I mean, this, traffic calming measures and streetlights and speed bumps, honestly, if this is as big as you're all anticipating, we need the state probably to step in and do something tied to 9 or 84.
Right.
And I don't know, if you lead on the plan, you know, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. One thing, though, I just want to remind everyone, is that we did apply through the state through CROG, and we have that grant, and that they are studying the whole area for us. That has to do with the sidewalks, everything that goes along with it because of the expansion of the health center. So we did apply, and we received, I think it was a $350,000 grant, but it could be, I forgot if it was 350 or 450. But they're in the process of studying the whole area, and one of the big things, remember, we talked about, was the sidewalks and everything, and it's a study about that whole area and what the next things we should be doing, we and the state.
Right.
And with this health center, and what's going on there in that whole area.
And this all relates to Farmington.
The entire area. So again, I just want to remind people that that is going on right now, too. So...
And if I may, I'd just like to add that some of our recommendations are that the town actively engage in that process, the CROG study process, and speak up on behalf of the residents who are not able to be a part of that process. And I also would just like to clarify that there are 100 residents in the area, but we're looking at 30, about 30, single-family properties.
Mm-hmm.
Just so you have an idea of the number of...
And it's Munson, Middle, and South, pretty much.
Correct.
The other thing worthy of mention is about half that land is wet and undevelopable. So it's, it's not as big as it might appear from the perimeter.
You're a, you're a very successful developer. How do you think this will have impact on the people on South Road and the roads off of South, like Berkshire? Fast forward 10 years from now. How do you think that will impact their property?
So, so first of all, you have very good data existing because of the intensity of the uses. I have a hard time thinking of any use more intensive than the UConn Medical Center, not to mention all of the inventory around that. So we actually took a look at home values in that neighborhood, and they're actually higher and recovered faster than the rest of town, because you have so many well-paid people within that area where, and, you know, there's lots of anecdotal, you know, people's, I get all that. But as a general proposition, the commercial and residential uses, I would say, coexist very well there. You know, in 2008, or when the, when we built Omara Farm and Omara Ridge, and then that product type got saturated, where, you know, in other parts of the state, you couldn't give those houses away. They held their value. You know, that is a very desirable neighborhood residentially. And even though we all think of all the commercial there, there's been 450 residential units developed there in that same period of time. So, you know, they do get along well, and I, I do not, you know, it's easy for me to say, but I do not see it having a material detrimental impact. If anything, I think it improves values because it brings people into the neighborhood who are very well remunerated and will want to live in proximity to where they work.
Other questions? Yep, go ahead.
Can you speak to, maybe for the benefit of people at home and people here, what these buildings are the uses of, what type of businesses we're attracting to these potential buildings and development? Where are we headed with this?
So the recommendation is along the lines of the existing medical office campus zoning, which allows for medical office use, research uses, and basic ancillary kinds of uses, some food service, those types of uses.
Okay. I mean, I think what you're seeing is a medical, intellectual, biotech cluster forming there. And the amount of money, and you don't have the benefit of a representation, that's being invested, is very, very significant. So there is the very real possibility of discoveries of molecules and compounds that become very commercially desirable. And, I mean, I think that's what the state's policy, that's what we're looking to foster. And if that happens, they're going to want to be in proximity to the rest of that biotech cluster, because it is that collaboration that makes this all, these discoveries happen. And there's really no land out there anymore. So those are examples of what I see. I also see a need for rental housing for some of these people. And that would take cars off the road if it was walkable. And then, you know, I mean, everything along Farmington Avenue, you've got Farmington Bank in there now, pro-health physicians, I mean, any space that becomes, it's a very desirable location, Farmington, for all the reasons we know. It's medical uses, biotech uses, but just garden variety, you know, corporate uses. We all, United Technologies World Headquarters down the road. It's a good spot.
Thank you.
Mary?
Thank you for coming out. Just on those uses that you're talking about, those are only viable, correct, if the residents who are currently there opt to sell? Is that correct?
So within the area that we studied, I think what would happen in any given occasion, so let's, again, go back to the biotech example. Biotech is a very specialized use. They aren't necessarily just want to, they're not going to be able to fit into just any building, let's say, the Exchange or something like that. They're probably going to want to build something very highly specialized, like you might see in Cambridge, or Waltham, or Palo Alto, or wherever. But they'd establish the size that they need, the footprint that they need, they'd design it, and they would approach an owner of a premises and say, listen, this is how much land we need. We've established a minimum acreage that's necessary. So it would probably assemble with another site, or several sites. And, yes, there would never be, if one of your suggestions, there would never be any kind of eminent domain or any, now, this is purely private, commercial uses that would have to negotiate an arm's-length transaction between a buyer and a seller in a very conventional manner that happens all the time.
Thank you. Other questions?
Couple of things that I'd want to ask. When you talk about the uses and the people that would be moving in and the businesses there, as I said, we mentioned, you mentioned sidewalks, different kinds of things that the people have mentioned to you. How do you foresee those in this, I mean, I'm not a developer, I don't know, those being paid for? Are those the developer coming in and then taking on responsibility for those kinds of things? The town taking those financial responsibilities on? How is that, do you foresee that happening?
So clearly, if someone was developing a property, they would be obligated to put sidewalks on their own property, but that wouldn't preclude the zoning commission from saying, yeah, but that doesn't really get you anywhere, so would you kindly run them down to the corner?
So those are things that TPZ would actually instate?
I've certainly seen that once or twice.
When you've developed, yes. And I think one of the things that is, that's exciting about this is the planning. One of the reasons that the town council has taken this on with the Gateway was to look forward to a plan as opposed to developers coming in little by little and cherry-picking things.
Right.
And then you have no real focus of, of a wonderful area to have walkability and all kinds of things that a community that we really want. And we have that now to look forward to with this, with the Gateway Committee. I kind of, when you started talking about this, I see this as a possibility of that happening, which is exciting. And, but with that happening, and with it being something that the community is going to enjoy, is this fluid kind of approach, bless you, is, so it sounds like that's what it'll be as you talk to neighbors, as you find out needs, and as you kind of, you hear one thing, and then something else is brought up because someone brought up an issue about the road calming here, and we need a sidewalk there. So it appears that as we move along, it would be fluid along the way. Is that, am I reading this?
Very much so. And I think one of the beauties of what it is that we're proposing is that it has no, it doesn't rezone the property in question. It's a plan, it's some guidance. And that, of course, there'd be general language in there, but that always gives the Planning Commission the ability to assemble further data, further testimony, more recent events of whoever might be in the area at the time to, you know, put together a comprehensive solution, and then conclude whether or not something works. It may be then, in instances where proposals are being made, they're interesting proposals, but they just wouldn't work in the area because people are too much against it. But, you know, this at least gives, if people actually support it in the neighborhood in any given application, this gives some guidance that would allow it to be permissible, which it currently isn't without just these ad hoc zone changes, which, for all the reasons you said, is probably not a good idea.
Anything else? Okay, well, just on behalf of the council, I just want to thank you for coming tonight and sharing this with us, and us having the opportunity to ask you some questions. I know you were at TPZ last night, and it was continued, so there's more to come.
Right.
And, and I hope that the community comes and expresses their opinions and concerns so that there can be a partnership in this. I mean, that, that would be the goal long-term for our community, is that we work together to do good things for the town. So, so thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. Public hearing, non. New items.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to add to the agenda, item L29, which is the appointment of a justice of the peace.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. At this time, I would ask for any public comment, and please, just come to the podium. Please state your name and your address, and we have, you have five minutes to, to speak to us.
Good evening. Congratulations, by the way, and thank you for serving. My name is Eric Kaufman, 11 Beach Street, Farmington, Connecticut. I'm here representing the owners and residents of Oakland Gardens, and more specifically, those of us who live on Beach Street, Bungalow Hill Road, Crescent Avenue, Maple Avenue, and Oakland Avenue. These streets serve over 75 homes, plus, of course, the many commuters who use Oakland Avenue to skip the light at Old Mountain Road. Oakland Gardens is a diverse neighborhood. Our residents comprise many different backgrounds, creeds, races, religions, and sexual orientations. Some of us work, some of us are retired. We have a group home, one of the few properties sponsored in Farmington by Habitat for Humanity, and a volunteer fire group that is soon to celebrate 75 years of service to the community. Over the years, many of us in Oakland Gardens have requested of town management that our roads be addressed. On January 15, 2014, I sent a letter to the town manager requesting that the town address the deficiencies in our Oakland Gardens roads. Her response dated January 30, 2014, and I quote, "The town of Farmington has a priority list, and although the above-mentioned roads are in need of repairs, there are other roads in town that require immediate attention," unquote. That was two years ago. I cannot speak for the other roads that are being repaved, nor do I know what constitutes immediate attention. But our roads were last repaved in the fall of 2002, I'm sorry, 1992 and 1993, when our underground water and sewer lines were installed. Since that time, 23 years ago, no other work other than minor patching has been done. In addition, neither Beach Street nor Bungalow Hill Road ever received the final coat of asphalt. It was scheduled, apparently, but never installed. Although the town council's efforts to mitigate increases in the mill rate every year are laudable, this mitigation has come at a price, specifically the timely maintenance of town property. Every year, our taxes go to maintain our Farmington roads, but never ours. We believe that after 23 years, our time has come. To formalize this request, we have prepared a petition. We are requesting, in this upcoming budget year, that the town, number one, address our neighborhoods derelict and inadequate roads. Number two, maintain the public facilities that are located in Oakland Gardens. And for the betterment of the entire town, we are suggesting a change to the town code, Chapter 88, Buildings and Blighted, to make occupied buildings subject to the same regulations imposed upon unoccupied buildings. I have copies in this binder of our 55 signatures of the petition, photos showing the condition of our roads, and a copy of my letter, Tim Missigan, and her response. Would those from Oakland Gardens just raise your hands, please? Thank you. We have come here tonight to ask for your help, and more importantly, your action. If the council wishes to correct what has been ignored in Oakland Gardens for far too long, you will promote and include our requests in this upcoming budget year. If you do not, however, you will be giving the residents of Oakland Gardens a different response. In other words, happy to take your money, but you're simply not important enough. Hopefully, you'll make the right choice. Thank you.
May I give this?
Yes. And, uh... Any remarks also?
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you for coming. You're, that will all be in the record in the minutes. Thank you for coming, and thank you all for coming on this night. Not a good one out, but thank you all. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I first want to, my name is David Tabel. I live in 26 Walnut Farms Drive. And first, I want to congratulate you on the election results, and thank you for serving. I think we have a fantastic town. I grew up in this town, and I am thrilled to grow my own family up in town. And thanks to leaders like you, this town is a great place to live. So thank you so much for that. I would just want to make you aware of an exciting project that we have in place. We're working on a project to improve the recessed space for the West Woods Upper Elementary School. We think the school is an outstanding school with wonderful teachers, facilities, and administrative... We think the school is an outstanding school with wonderful teachers, facilities, and administrators. And over the past 18 months, we've been working with the town following processes and protocols in the school to develop a way to help improve the recess space at that school. Part of the process was to present at the Board of Education last night because our understanding is part of the process that is required. And I think it was well-received and will be put on the agenda going forward. To give you a little bit of background information, the Westwoods Upper Elementary School has approximately 680 students, and it's composed of fifth and sixth graders, and there are about 170 students per lunch wave. The recess area is about the size of the infield of a baseball diamond, or roughly 11,000 square feet. And because the small space is in place, running is prohibited and active play is limited, and that was actually in some of the older rules. The recess lot has two basketball hoops, some lines drawn on an asphalt lot, four four-square boxes. And you can imagine with 170 students in this area, it's kind of crowded. You know, you have a long line, sometimes 30 people deep with some of the basketball hoops and so on. So we're very pleased that in the fall 2014, the school opened up the fields to the north side of the field. But they could only open the fields up to about 29% of the students because of logistical reasons and because of three concurrent PE classes. The logistical reasons are the cafeteria is on the opposite side of the fields and it's a pretty long school. So because of that, we've been trying to work on ways to improve recess. If you look at other schools in the Farmington Valley, from what we can tell, every other fifth and sixth grader in the Farmington Valley has the fields and recess equipment to exercise and get moderate to vigorous exercise. That includes Avon's 5-6 school and Canton's 4-5-6 school. In addition, if you look at the elementary schools in town and even Irving Robbins, all those schools, they can play soccer, they can run and do all those things, which I think is fantastic. Unfortunately, the space in that small area isn't conducive for the 5-6 school. So our overall goal is to make sure all students can get moderate to vigorous exercise. And we've developed a plan, a playground plan, to help alleviate the space and the solution rather than just coming up with problems. And we just wanted to make you aware of this because we don't know if future involvement may be needed or not, don't know at this point. And I want to thank you for your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much, David.
I am Alan McIndell for Spring River Unionville. A few quick items. First, thank you for your devoting your time, energy, talents in this purely volunteer job of helping to guide and govern this jewel of the town. You are appreciated. Second, I hope that nothing is done to a high street or any other street that would anyway delay, discourage, or disrupt drivers trying to pick us to work or school or any other place. Three, I don't think that the many people who voted to spend several million dollars on the Krell farm purchase really expected to see so many buildings, including those ugly plastic greenhouses, that what was supposed to be open space. I know the town has little control of what can be built there, but it would be nice if the property were tidier and the buildings more aesthetic. Finally, on a more technical point, Farmington is a member of the Farmington Valley Health District. Because of the size of Farmington, we have three seats on the Board of Directors. Currently, and for about a year, one place has been unfilled, apparently because of a lack of a nomination being brought to the town council. The board meets only once a month, it's not very controversial, and it functions fairly well with just two out of the three members from Farmington. Nonetheless, as long as we deserve three, it would be better if we had a full complement of representatives. So I would ask you to seek a person to fill that vacancy. And once again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan.
How are you doing tonight? Dave Hutchison, Crescent Avenue. And I apologize, I'm not good at public speaking, and I haven't been up here in many years. But congratulations on your new jobs. And I hope to God you guys don't get taxed for it. I live in Oakland Gardens, but I haven't seen that petition. But what I like to talk about is a couple of things regarding that neighborhood. One of them is, it's got a lot of elderly people in there. And these are tough times for a lot of people in the state of Connecticut. And even though Farmington is a very affluent town, I think there's tough times here for a lot of people in Farmington, too. And the word blight, I was involved in the Oakland Gardens Homeowners Association many years ago when there was an abandoned house in the property and it was a foreclosure. The poor soul died in it, and it was a hard time getting family, and the thing just fell to pieces. And we talked then about blight in the community. But when word got out in this neighborhood, a couple of the elderly people in the neighborhood spoke to me, says, "Dave, I can't paint my house." Or, you know, "I'm 85 years old, and when I pay somebody to cut my grass, it's $40 or $50." So if that's what you guys are going to do, I'm asking that you give consideration to those who are elderly or on fixed incomes, who may not have the resources to do what somebody who makes a hundred, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year may have the ability to do. So give that consideration because these are people that live in our community, and some of them have lived in here before we came in here, and that needs to be taken care of. The other thing is with regards to the streets in Oakland Gardens, oh yeah, they're in rough shape. They really are. I'd rather go through Hartford sometimes on my Harley than come down my street. But there's a lot of truck traffic there, coming on from Crescent Avenue, from Farmington Avenue, from the package store. And if that could be addressed, I think that could be a help for quality of life in the neighborhood and also to prolong the condition of the roads. And I've got two dogs. One of them is being trained for birds. The other one, he's special. But they're valuable, extremely valuable. And four times in the past three weeks, my wife and I, all the dogs have been hit, almost been hit, from people coming down Oakland, crossing Beach onto Crescent. At about 5:30 in the morning, when people are coming to work, they're flying through that neighborhood like a bat out of hell. I've got a vest on, the dogs have blinking lights on the leashes. We have no sidewalks, so we've got no choice. We've got, some of us is going to be in the road a little bit. And I don't know how to resolve that issue. Anything you guys can do on that, I tell you, I'd appreciate that. There's people in the neighborhood that walk there, and I don't want to see anybody get hit by a car, and nobody does. But sometimes people aren't paying attention to what they've got to do. And the stop sign there, you may as well take that out because they didn't even stop for that. And guys, thanks again for everything, and y'all take care. Pete, you're looking good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You do, too.
Thanks, Hutch.
Other public comment? Yes, sir.
Mike D'Amico, 6 Debra Lane. I got here late, so I didn't want to miss the opportunity to congratulate all of you who were elected and re-elected to the council. As a former member of this great body, I know how much hard work and how much time goes into all the decisions that you have to make for our town. And I just wanted to say thank you for all the hard work, thank you for all the time that you put into it. If it's any consolation to you, and I'm sure that it is, even though you don't get compensated monetarily, you do have the satisfaction of knowing that you do good things for the town, and I know that you'll continue to do that. So I just wanted to offer my congratulations and my thanks to you. As you heard tonight, there are many and varied issues that come before the council, and I'm sure that you will do your due diligence and do a good job for all the residents and all the neighbors in town. The final thing I want to say is I'm going to RSVP in advance. I noticed in the town manager's report that there's going to be an invitation to the legislative delegation to come in February for our annual talk with the town council. So I will be happy to be here at the first meeting in February. I'm sure we'll be discussing the state budget and state grant money and Farmington's wish list and many other issues, but I'm sure those will be the main ones. So I stand ready to help, and none of you, none of you are ever shy about letting myself and the other legislators know what you need and what you want from us. So please keep up that tradition. Call us, send us an email, and certainly let us know in February what we can do for you. So congratulations and thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Our needs, too. Not just wish list, our needs. Thank you. Other public comment? Okay, with that, we'll close that F. G1, reading of the minutes. Motion?
I move to approve the minutes of the December 8, 2015, regular town council meeting.
Second.
Any corrections to the minutes? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Reading of communications and written? Nothing else? Okay. Report of committees. UConn, we will actually be meeting on February 19 at 10:00 a.m. at UConn. Land acquisition?
Nothing new to report.
Green efforts?
A couple of things. First of all, I want to remind everybody that the Farmington Cleanup Day has been scheduled for April the 30th. That's the last Saturday in April. And we hope that everybody can get help, come out and contribute over that period of time to clean up our areas, both our parks and our streets. The second thing I just want to make sure everybody is aware of, we've been looking at the possibility of the town sponsoring the sale of compost bins at discounted rates. So that's something which we've, we're talking to various vendors on. If we can provide discounted compost material to the public, we will be doing so.
Great, thank you. Joint Town and Farmington City Hartford Committee?
Nothing new to report.
Bike committee?
So we've been continuing to look at our town in terms of the streets that are most suited for bicycle traffic, and we'll continue to add signage. One thing I want to make sure that everybody has noted is that on the major intersections where the bike path crosses roads, and it's Brickyard Road and various other roads, there are now installed lights. So the person who is trying to cross Brickyard Road will come up, hit the button, the lights will begin flashing, well in advance so that people will know about that, and the crossing should be much safer than it has been. We've been lucky not to have any problems in terms of actual accidents, but certainly this will vastly help the crossage at all those roads. The only areas, and I've talked to a number of people, there are areas like where the road crosses New Britton Avenue that does have stoppage there, stop signs there, so the traffic has to stop anyways. Areas like that will not be lighted, but we're really talking about uncontrolled crossings, and those have been all serviced with lights, with the exception of the, I won't say illegal crossing, but the local crossing at 177 where people cross and there's no crosslights. There is going to be signage put in there and lights put in there. They'll be part of the New Britton Avenue Improvement Project.
Okay, thank you. Gateway. Amy?
The RFP went out, and I believe we're going to be getting all of our bids in March. So we're looking forward to seeing those and taking it to the next level.
Great. Web page, John.
I have nothing new to report on the web page subcommittee. Hopefully, we'll meet sometime in the next couple of weeks, and I have some more information for you at the next meeting.
Okay. Report of the chair and liaisons. Again, I just wanted to wish everybody a Happy New Year and just welcome everybody to the table. So, great. Board of Ed liaison, John.
I have a few things to report for the Board of Ed. They met last night, and the new members were sworn in, a nice ceremony, and they elected their officers. And as everyone in town very well knows, Mary Grace Reed is no longer chair. And so Chris Fagan was elected chair last night by his peers and has big shoes to fill, so I wish him the best of luck. He did a good job last night at his first meeting. They also have started using Chromebooks at the Board of Education, which is an interesting endeavor. Last night was the first meeting that they used their Chromebooks, so they're trying to go paperless and use technology, the technology that they're promoting for the students they're having to use themselves. So hopefully, they're enjoying that. They approved a calendar last night as well, which has some changes in it due to state mandates and state, which was legislated this year. There's more PD days that were required, and so they approved the new calendar, which includes six half-days, which is something new for Farmington. I believe it had started at eight half-days, and they moved it to six. So if you're interested, you may want to look into the minutes of the Board of Ed and take a good look at that calendar because that will have an adverse effect on many parents. So we saw a speaker here previously speak at public comment regarding the playground. He also spoke last evening about the playground at Westwoods Upper Elementary and had a more formal presentation last night along with more speakers, and the Board of Ed took it up to put it, to add it to their agenda to speak about the next step. So I don't know if it'll be at the next meeting, but in upcoming meeting, they will be speaking about that playground at Westwoods Upper Elementary School. And I'm excited to report that Vince LaFontaine was appointed interim business administrator. He's done a tremendous job with Excel for, I believe, about the last 12 years. And we had our business, or the Board of Ed's business administrator stepped down, and Vince stepped right up and is filling that role, and I have tremendous confidence in him. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot happening.
Yeah.
UVIA?
I have nothing to report, Madam Chair, but through you, perhaps John Vivert does? I don't know if you've been?
I know nothing.
Okay. TPC, Peter?
All I have to report is Metro gave a more detailed report last night on the plan of conservation, so I would urge everyone, if they're interested in those meetings, to attend the TPC meetings where those hearings are still open right now.
Thank you. Do you expect it'll be on the next agenda? Do they usually?
Yes, if the hearing's open, I anticipate it will be open, it will be on the next meeting.
Okay, thanks. WPCA?
The next WPCA meeting is actually tomorrow, January 13. That happens in the Town Hall Board of Ed Conference Room. And among the agenda items is an update on the upgrade of the water pollution control facility, and we'll also be thanking outgoing WPCA member John McGrain for his 11 years of service on the WPCA.
Wow, it's a long time. Thank you. EDC? Oh. No report. Human relations?
Nothing to report.
Chamber, John?
The Chamber of Commerce will be holding their Business After Hours meeting tomorrow evening at Seen Art Bar and Cultivo Tea Shop. And then they are also holding their first social after-hours, which will be on Friday, January 29, between 7:00 and 9:30, also at Seen Art Bar. That's the first time they're doing a social after-hours.
Oh, thank you. Any other liaison reports? Okay, report of the town manager, Kathy?
You have the written report in front of you. I'll just go through some of the highlights. The first thing is that you do, I have attached the town council budget schedule, so mark your calendars for the budgets. And again, March and April and May is our budget time. I just put the Nutmeg TV air dates, just in case anyone was interested. your calendars for the budgets. And again, March and April and May is our budget time. I just put the Nutmeg TV air dates, just in case anyone was interested in when these meetings are shown on TV. We do, as Mike D'Amico stated, usually invite our state legislators to attend our February meeting, so I was planning on doing that, to have them come if that was okay with the council. We are having our photo shoot at the next meeting in January. Please arrive at 6:30, and we're going to take our picture for our council photo that we put in the back of the council chambers.
I just note that I am intending to wear a tie there, too.
We were all wondering.
There is a community recreation service update, and as you know, one of our goals and our strategic plan is to try to just have more awareness of our social service department. So I just put a quick update about some of the things that were going on, some of the non-for-profit groups that the social service department works for, and also Nancy Parent has asked that they were going to be trying to run a large pasta fundraising dinner coming up, and she's going to ask the council to participate, maybe serving food and things like that, and there'll be more information. She'll reach out or I'll reach out directly to you, but she's looking for you guys to volunteer for that. And we have our 2014-15 audit. I left the audit at your places if you want to take your audits with you. It is a clean audit. The auditors will be at our February meeting, so this will give you an opportunity to look through the audit before the February meeting, but I just gave you a short update of the highlights, but it is a clean audit. But they will be here to answer specific questions on it at the next meeting. Our state grant update, in general, we, budget to budget, the governor has made two cuts, but budget to budget, we did not budget some of the first, some revenue. So budget to budget, we are short about $17,000. The latest cut, which I mentioned that we would update, that we just had a reduction, was about $2,000. And so budget to budget, it's about $17,000, even though the reduction to Farmington is much higher than that. But because we did not budget, I think it was $140,000 or $170,000 in the first, in our last year, so budget to budget, we're only short around $17,000. I'm not sure if that's the end of the reductions, but we will keep you up to speed as we go along. But right now, $17,000 is approximately what our reduction is in the budget. We have the upcoming town council meetings. Just so you know, you'll have an agenda item coming up, but we're proposing on January 25, we have a special joint town Board of Education meeting at 6:00 p.m., and that's to discuss the findings of the Board of Ed Capital Ad hoc Committee. We'd like to do that before the budget starts and also before the board comes in February for their capital, so we can spend a good hour going through the ad hoc, and then the board is going to have their regular meeting. On the 26th is our regular workshop meeting. We have a busy agenda that night. We're going to update the strategic plan and our town manager's goals. You'll get the strategic plan and goals, the existing ones now in advance of the meeting. Also at that meeting, we are going to have a quick review of our debt management review that Joe has given us in the past, kind of talking about what our existing debt is, what is coming up in the future, some various things that we think that would be helpful for you all before we get into the budget season. Then in February, the first February meeting is going to be the regular February Town Council meeting, and then the 23rd would be our first budget, capital budget presentation, and that is for both the town and the Board of Education. So just kind of trying to highlight some of the things that are coming up. And lastly, the only other item that I have is that I just wanted to let everyone know that there will be a Traffic Review Board meeting on Thursday, January 28, at 7:00 p.m. at the Yates Room at the Farmington Police Department to discuss the High Street-Farmington Village traffic impact.
Where is that again?
That's at the police station, the Yates Room, January 28 at 7:00 p.m. We have an email list of interested parties, and they will be getting notified of the list. And just to let you all know, that's when we're having the meeting. So that's happening.
Time again?
At 7:00 p.m.
Seven, thank you.
And that's it for my report. I don't know if you have any specific questions?
Okay. Well, could I have a motion to accept the report?
I move to accept the January 12 report of the town manager.
Second.
Are there any questions for Kathy or comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Now, I'd like you to take out your appointments, and we have a few. Okay, we'll start with L1.
L1. Madam Chair, I move that the firm of Halloran &amp; Sage be appointed as Corporation Counsel for the period January 2016 through January 2018.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay?
L2. I move that Duncan Forsyth of Halloran &amp; Sage be appointed as Assistant Corporation Counsel for the period January 2016 through January 2018.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay?
L3. I move that the firm of Day Pitney LLP be appointed as Bond Counsel for the period of January 2016 through January 2018.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
L4. I move that the firm of Metzger, Lazarick &amp; Plum be appointed as Labor Counsel for the period of January 2016 through January 2018.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
All right, L5. I move that the firm of Halloran &amp; Sage LLP be appointed as Land Use Environmental Counsel for the period of January 2016 to January 2018.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Item L6. I move that Joseph Swetki be appointed as Treasurer from January 2016 until January 2018, and that compensation for the Treasurer be set at $3,500 annually.
Second.
Questions? Comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
Item L7. I move that Julie Albert be appointed as Deputy Treasurer from January 2016 until January 2018.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Okay, item L8. I move that the banks and investment pools as set forth on Agenda Item L8 be designated as depositories for town funds.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Yes.
Okay, item L9. I move that the following be appointed as members of or liaisons to. The following entities or committees as listed, except for there is one change, the focus group should read Landry.
Second.
I move to amend that motion. I move to add, in addition, John Viver to be included as a liaison to the Farmington High School Building Committee.
Second.
So if I could speak to that?
John?
For those of you who know me, I have a deep background with Farmington High School. My great-grandfather was the principal of Unionville High School, which is the predecessor school, and that's the school that my grandfather graduated from. My father and his entire family graduated from Farmington High School. My mother and her entire family graduated from Farmington High School. I'm one of 11 children. All 11 of us graduated from Farmington High School. I have four children. My youngest graduated from Farmington High School following her two brothers and sister last year. So I'm well acquainted with the high school, with the layout of the high school, knowing the difficulties that the high school have, and I would appreciate being assigned to this group as liaison to join Meredith, not to replace Meredith, so that I would have the opportunity to closely work with the building committee to help construct a plan for redoing our high school. I think it's, as we've heard in the past, there are problems at the high school. They came to us, or people have come to us several times about the disgrace of the auditorium. We would like to build on that, to come up with a master plan to change all of that. I know that later on in our agenda, we will actually appointing the building committee, but I'd ask you to allow me to serve as the second liaison from the town council to that group.
Amy?
Just to add to that, I mean, we all know that this is a hugely important thing, that this council will be overseeing during our two-year period. These are non-voting positions. I think more experience is better than less. I think bipartisan presence is probably a good thing with respect to this. This is going to be a potentially very costly capital improvement, and we are the fiscal, we are the body that's supposed to be looking over the finances, and Meredith and John both have enormous experience. I know it's not voting, I know it's primarily residents, but to have them both present, I think, would be a really positive thing. A liaison can be really active, or can sort of sit back and be less active. That depends on the need, and I think the need here may be having a council member with some extra knowledge. And I just think that John and Meredith add that knowledge. As I said, I think the bipartisan thing would be positive overall, because in the end, we want this to be something that everyone supports, and the most important thing is what's in the best interest of Farmington, and to have the experience, the knowledge, and the background of both of these people at the table during brainstorming, I think, could only be a positive thing. Everyone's got the best interest of the students, of the community, and of the community's finances. You know, everyone's looking out for that, and I also feel that, you know, John very well could be present as a resident who cares, but I think he's earned the respect of more, and there's nothing wrong for him to be a non-voting member on this committee. I think there's no loss here. This is a win-win situation. So I ask you as colleagues to respectfully sort of consider this, and I actually think it's really just a positive, there's no real negative.
I just, I want to, I'm the one that puts the building committee actually together, which you'll see the people that, in our other, under our other item. And I think part of the, I did have a discussion with John about this, we've talked about it, and I think the difference in my mind is that the liaison is not of, they're not a voting member, but they're also not a, in the past, they're not a vocal member of the building committee. The liaison goes back and forth with information from the council to the building committee, and then from the building committee to the council. So the input absolutely can be there at public comment or from us as a council to the liaison to go to the building committee. But as far as the liaison taking an active role in the committee, I don't see that as the role, and that hasn't been how we've approached it in the past. So my discussion about this item was not at all to have anyone silenced or not be a part of anything, because you certainly can. There's public comment, and there's information coming from the council. We, as a council, actually have a huge, huge responsibility when the building committee comes to us with information as to how we're going to proceed with it as far as financial is concerned and the way it's going to be held, taken care of. So I don't see it as, I see the liaison as not a vocal member, I guess, of the, not I guess, but of the committee, but more of a representative to bring information back and forth. So that was my decision, I'm putting just one person on as a liaison. So it wasn't not to have any voice heard, it was absolutely to just have that person back and forth and bringing information, so. And Kathy, I wanted to ask you about in the past, what, how we've done things. I know with Westwoods, it was a liaison, there was one, and that was a huge, that was a new building. So, anyway.
Just the only, the only rule is, is that for a building committee, other than following the ordinance, is that a Board of Education person needs to be on it. That's the only existing rule. Our past practice for school projects have been that for school projects of the Westwoods is that we had a liaison, which was really a non, you know, like a scout, going back and forth with information, and that was how that was done in the past. But, you know, the only rule is, is that it has, one has, it's a council choice, it's a council choice.
I mean, Nancy, I hear 100% of what you're saying. I just, like, I know I'm the liaison to Human Relations Commission. I am not a voting member there. I help them, I help guide them as to what's the best way to present to the town council and what the rules are in the town council. I just, I feel that even if you're not a voting member, you do, we are active. I mean, we're all liaisons to all these committees, and we don't just sit quietly, we try to give some insight and some help. I'm just saying that this is a huge project, and Westwoods, to some extent, was this little bit simpler, because you're building a new building. This is a lot more complicated, what we're going to do, or how we're going to do it. If we have both of them, and from two different parties, I just, I don't see the harm. I know if you're, I don't, I don't know if Meredith's going to sit in the back of the room and not talk. I hope Meredith speaks and gives some insight, because I think the town of Farmington will benefit from you speaking and giving insight, because you have experience in that room that other people won't. And I just think John would just be an extra hand on that. This is, this is one of the biggest things we're looking at in the next two years. So I know it's your vision, and I just, I just think it would be helpful to Farmington to have both of them.
Other comments?
I wish I had more experience of knowing what happened in the past. I'm a little torn here right now.
Other comments?
Nancy, a question. I mean, is any, is anybody able to come and participate in these meetings?
Yes.
They're not closed?
No, no. There's public comment at every meeting. And now, I was assured that, I made sure that that was the case when John and I spoke, that there's, and some other people that were interested in the building committee itself. I wanted to make sure that the voices could be, were absolutely heard at any time that they had any questions or comments or concerns. So there will be public comment at all of the meetings, and there's public comment here as well to speak. We're on TV, so any of those comments are heard throughout the town by coming to our meeting as well, so.
So by public comment, I'm assuming you mean there's a section of the meeting in the beginning that you can offer suggestions, and then they can listen for the rest of the meeting? Because that's generally what we mean here by public comment. So when somebody comes here and has a public comment to the town council, they're not allowed to participate in discussions or say something in the middle of a meeting. They have to do it in public comment, and that's the way the Board of Education does it as well. And so that's the sort of thing that I don't think works as well. I think that, you know, what I heard Kathy say is that there aren't rules to designate how this happens, and that participation by the liaison happens at many of our committees. It's not unusual for a town council person who is the liaison to have a conversation in the middle of a meeting or offer suggestions in the middle of a meeting, no matter what committee they are liaison to. Certainly, you know, when I was a member of the Housing Authority, I actively had discussions about the housing issues. I didn't have any vote. I wasn't part of the Housing Authority, but certainly my ideas were brought forth. And all I'm saying, asking you for is the opportunity to attend those meetings as the town council liaison, joint town council liaison, to be able to offer suggestions and ideas when they occur.
I mean, I know Peter and I are jointly on the gateway and jointly on the land acquisition. I feel sometimes we get to better places because we're working together as a team. So, and the other thing is, I think, John, how many years have you been in the council now? Eight?
No, this is only my seventh.
Seven, I mean, and in TPZ. I mean, someone with the knowledge of the town and the council and TPZ and the schools with that breadth of knowledge, I'd want them to be part of the conversation. And there's no vote. If it were a vote, it would be a very different conversation, but neither of you would have a vote. I just, I think the town would benefit from that active knowledge. Anyway, we talked a lot. Anyone else?
Any other comments?
I just have a question. With all of these liaison roles, is there any point at which we know definitively what the role, what the proper role of the liaison is in terms of participation at the table? Or is that up to the chair of the committee?
Well, I mean, I think it's, I think there's different roles. Some of it is based on the chair of the committee and also what the different bodies are. Now, like a TPZ, you're a liaison. You're not, Peter, probably sitting there and participating at a TPZ level, so you don't, you, at that level, you're not doing that. At the Board of Education, I'm not sure if you're actively participating as the Board of Education liaison at that level. At the building committees?
You're not.
In the past, they have, they have, they have not spoken at the liaison... In the past, they have, they have, they have not spoken at, the liaison has not been a participate. In the Westwoods one, and I'm clear on it, because I was there, the liaison was on the council, and myself sat in the back of the room. But, that said, it's going to be the chairman that's going to decide what the role is going to be, and at some of these other committees, absolutely, there's a much more different participation on it. So, again, I don't think there's a role of liaison, I think the role of liaison in general is to give information back to the council, that is what the role is of the liaison. So, that doesn't really answer your question, but I hope it helps a little bit.
I guess maybe the question is, what would be in the best interest of Farmington? To have a liaison who's a little bit more involved and engaged, or someone who sits in the back of the room? I personally, for this, because it's so big, and it's potentially, I mean, the potential cost could be, there's a huge range, and what we do is huge, I would want someone a little more active. That's one person's opinion.
John?
It's a compelling situation here. I think, you know, one thing that we need to recognize, and Kathy touched on it, is that, you know, the TPZ liaison, the Board of Education liaison, you know, these are, these are meetings held in the public, they're not public meetings, and that's why we don't participate, and that's why we have rules of procedure for public comment, because, again, they're, they're meetings held in the public, not public meetings. With these committees, it's a little bit different, and, and again, I think for the sake of, of organization, we should limit it to one liaison. With that being said, it doesn't, it doesn't stop anybody from coming in and participating, and, and again, the will of the chair. If, you know, this, this committee hasn't even been formed yet, I think you'd be more than welcome to attend any of the meetings, and I'm sure that if you brought any valuable input, they would be more than happy to listen, listen to that input, and even dialogue with that input. I do know that there have been situations when we've spoken, public comment, let's take the Board of Ed, for example, and I had knowledge of, of the town council, then, you know, we can break protocol and engage in a willing, you know, meaningful dialogue at that point. So, again, it's the will of the chair. I would support the will of our chair with these committees, because I think there's been plenty of discussion before tonight regarding all of these committees, and, and so I would respect that in my vote tonight. But, I would absolutely encourage you to attend, and I, and I believe you would bring a breadth of, of knowledge to that committee.
Just one really important point for me. The Board of Ed and the TPZ, they're elected by the people of Farmington. So, honestly, neither of you, it's, it's not as significant that you participate, but this committee is primarily residents, and the other committees where we're much more active as liaisons are not elected positions. So, I feel like this is a little bit different. These are not, your Board of Ed, if someone doesn't like what the Board of Ed is doing, then they come out and vote, and they can, they can tell that board how they feel, same thing with TPZ. So, I think there's a big difference between committees that are elected officials that the public can respond to, and the committees that are appointed by, you know, in this case, by us. I think we need to maybe be a little bit more involved in the ones that are not elected, and I think that, that's in response, looking out for our public.
Any other comments?
Kathy? No. No comment, I was going to say, it's a vote on the amendment, I think.
Okay, so first, we have to vote on the amendment. And Paula?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Hold the board.
Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Hold the board.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
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 So, we're back to the original motion.
Do you want me to read the original motion again? Or do we know it?
The original motion is the list, as it is here, as it's.
With Landry.
Yes.
With that correction.
All those in, all those in favor, say, oh, and Arnold is Russ Arnold.
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Okay. I move that Justin Bernier be appointed to the Tourism Central Regional District as an alternate, for the balance of a three-year term, beginning immediately and ending June 30th, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. L-17.
I move that James J. Foot be appointed to the Joint Green Efforts Committee, beginning immediately, for an indefinite term.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. L-21.
I move that Steve Egan be appointed to the Retirement Board, for a two-year term, beginning immediately, and ending in January 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. L-22.
I move that Rob Ingertson be appointed to the Retirement Board, for a two-year term, beginning immediately, and ending in January 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. L-23.
I move that Pauline Wilson be appointed to the Retirement Board, for a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. L-24.
I move that Kyle Cunningham be appointed to the Retirement Board, for a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. L-25.
I move that Jeff Porter be appointed to the Retirement Board, for a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending in January 2018.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay. L-29.
I move that John Landry be appointed as a Justice of the Peace, for the balance of a four-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 2nd, 2017.
Madam Chair, I'd like to recuse myself.
Thank you.
Are you marrying someone who's?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Hey, you can come back.
That was a quick turn.
I have several numbers.
Oh, yes, John, go right ahead.
So, I'd like to make a motion, L-13. That Mary Jane Parlow be appointed to the Farmington Valley Health District, for the balance of a three-year term, beginning immediately and ending December 31st, 2016.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
And L-18, that Ray Elling will be appointed to the Human Relations Commission, for the balance of a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending June 30th, 2017.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Anything else? No? Old business, none. New business?
New business.
Number one.
All right, are we on N1?
N1.
I move to consider and take action on the following 2016 blighted building list. I'll just read these. 23 Lakeview Drive, 63 Main Street, Unionville, 70702 New Britton Avenue, and 15 Walnut Street.
Second.
Kathy? As you know, that every year, you create a blighted building list, you have 75 days from this date of submission to approve, disapprove, or modify the list. Historically, what you have done is, after we've discussed this, you've tabled the item until the February meeting, so it gives the opportunity for the council to look at these properties, or if there's any other properties that you feel that we've missed, to add them to the list. I just want to go through, in summary, just to let you know that we have taken one property off the blighted building list since last year, and we have not added any properties. In my opinion, I feel that we have two blighted properties on this list, which I would call very much a problem. The rest of them, the, the two other ones, I'm hopeful that there is going to be some movement on them. The property in Unionville, 63 Main Street, there was quite a bit of work being done to that property, and 15 Walnut Street, we are waiting to see if that house is going to be able to, it's going through probate, and there's hopefully, that that property will also move. The other two, one of them, we're in court, as you're all aware of, and the 70702 New Britton Avenue, I wrote here that we are in the process, and when I met the town, I met the staff at this point in time, is trying to come up with some various recommendations that I will be making to the council about how to address this property, because it has been on for a couple of years, and we're really not being very successful in any type of cleanup. So, those two. So, that's my report on the blight.
And what we're going to do is give you an opportunity to go out and look at the buildings, as we generally do, so we would table this until the February meeting. So, we need a motion to table.
Before we table this.
Oh, John, go ahead.
On the Lakeview Drive property, in the past, this, there has been fines levied for this?
Yes.
Has that, that process stopped?
It is, it is, has stopped since we've been in legal act, yeah.
Litigation? Okay.
Other questions? Concerns? Okay.
All right, I'll move to table the action on the, on the blighted list, as listed until the February 9th meeting, Kathy, is that the appropriate meeting?
Yeah, it will be the, yes.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay. Two, N3.
Okay. I move to approve the attached capital improvement policy.
Second.
Discussion.
Your next, one, two, three, four items are our policies that we do every two years. This one is the capital improvement policy. Joe and I are not recommending any changes to the policy. One of the things that we are always doing is to, we strive for this capital policy to meet the capital policy, and the council actually has done a very good job over the last couple of years, where we have been meeting our capital policy. And so, I think this is an excellent policy to have, and I would not recommend making any changes at this time.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N3.
I move that we approve the attached debt management policy.
Second.
Kathy?
This policy is our debt management policy. Again, Joe and I are not recommending any changes to it. This is really a very important financial policy, and our bond counsel and our Moody's rating are always very impressed that we have these policies, and that we follow these policies, and we adhere to them, and, but at this time, we're not recommending any changes.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, N4.
I move to approve the attached reserve policy.
Second.
This is the reserve policy, sometimes known as our fund balance, and, again, I'm not, we're not making any recommendations for any changes at this time. Again, they're very important financial policies that our Moody's ratings and our bond counsel like, and as you could see briefly in my manager's report, you can see that we have been improving our fund balance, based on our policy statement, so at this point, I'm not making any recommendations to change the policy.
And I just want to note on the, where it does talk about 8% as a minimum, and 12% as a maximum right now, we're going to hear about that from our auditors next, in February, they'll be speaking to what we should be thinking about as far as a maximum, and so, just remember that. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N5.
I move to approve the attached employee health self-insurance fund reserve policy.
Second.
We are, again, not recommending any changes to the policy. I did want to note that this is a very unique policy, and I do like to remind the council that this policy in particular is one that very few towns have. Our bond counsel, our Moody's rating, always look to it, also, other municipalities look to it, they use it as a template. It's a very impressive policy that the council was able to come up with, and that we were able to do that back when, in about 2011. Were always asked to give a copy of it out to other towns, and it's a really good policy, and it's unusual for a municipality to have it, so, at this time, we're not making, recommending any changes to it.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N6.
I move to set a special town council meeting on Monday, January 25th, 2016, at 6:00 PM, at Westwoods Elementary School's library.
Second.
This will be a special joint meeting of the town council and the Board of Education, to discuss the findings of the Board of Education capital ad hoc. It's before the Board of Education meeting, which, does it start at 7:30 or 7 o'clock?
7:00.
7:00, so, anticipated for about an hour, and we're looking to do this before the overall capital meeting, which is slated for the second February meeting.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N7.
I move to change the time of the February 23rd, 2016 town council meeting, from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and to set a public hearing on the town manager's proposed five-year capital improvement plan.
Second.
This is to set a public hearing on the capital plan, and also, to start early. We do that because it sometimes gets a little bit late, and we do have the board come in, we have a public hearing, so it gives us an opportunity, if you remember, this is when all the departments come in, and we meet, and we go over the five-year capital improvement policy, I mean, plan.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N8.
All right, N8. This is a big one. All right. I move to approve Agenda Item N8, to perform the actions pertaining to the Farmington High School renovation project, as presented, Sections 1 through 6, with the following Farmington High School Building Committee members. So, I'm going to read the members. Bill Wadsworth, Chair, a Board of Education member, to be announced at a later date. Jean Barron, Farmington resident. Justin Bernier, Farmington resident. Johnny Carrier, Farmington resident. Hillary Donald, Farmington resident. And Daniel Kleinman, Farmington resident. So, those are the voting members, as well as the following non-voting members. Meredith Trimble, Town Council Liaison. Kathleen Egan, Town Manager. Kathleen Greeter, Superintendent. Russ Arnold, Director of Public Works, Town Engineer. Vincent, should Vincent be in there? Vincent LaFontaine, Interim School Business Manager. Bill Silva, High School Principal. Tim Harris, Director of School Facilities Maintenance. And Catherine Howard, Howroyd, Clerk for the Committee.
Can I ask you to just read those one more time? It's hard to get them all.
Here.
Sure.
Do you want to just take that list?
Do you want me to pass it down?
Yeah.
If you have it.
Yep.
Paula, do you still want me to read them out loud again?
Nope.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I guess we should say that this is kind of a long motion, 1 through 6, so, the public can get all of this in the minutes on the town council website as well. Do you want me to summarize what the motion is?
Yes, sure. Yeah. What this motion is doing, the first thing you're doing is you're approving the attached statement of needs, which is from the Board of Education, dated on April 13th, 2015. By town ordinance, the first thing that the council has to do is approve the statement of needs, so that's what you're doing. Your second thing is you're appointing your members and your non-voting members. The third thing you're doing is you're charging the Farmington High School Renovation Committee, and in general, what you're charging the committee to do is you're charging the committee to review the Farmington High School Facility Report, and you're also reviewing information from the Statement of Needs to gain a better understanding of the existing conditions of the entire committee, so, I mean, of the entire building. Then, once that committee does that review, they're prioritizing the needs. After they do that, they're developing various strategies, and the priorities should include, but not limited to, educational requirements, code requirements, ADA requirements, safety requirements, space needs, and phasing of the project. Then, the committee is to develop projects based on their priorities and the financial impact. Once that's done, the committee is going to need to hire an architect to come up with preliminary concept plans and cost estimates for the various projects that take place. If the funding is approved, and that, that funding is, the intent is in the, in the upcoming capital budget that's coming up, if that funding is approved, then they'll be able to hire an architect to do that. And then, after the review of the preliminary plans and the cost estimates, the committee will then come back to the council to recommend a project scope and cost estimates for the council for consideration. So that's, in general, what this, what you're charging the committee and what this motion says.
Any questions? John?
Kathy, do we have money in our current budget to pay for the preliminary work that the committee will do?
Not for the entire, we have $100,000 that has not been spent, and then the intent is to be putting more money in this upcoming budget to cover that.
But the $100,000 will be able to use this architect to do the preliminary concepts?
Start, start, plus the money that's coming in this budget coming up, yeah.
Thank you.
We had part of a discussion about this, Kathy and I did, in trying to figure out what was necessary to begin with, and the feeling is that more is necessary than the $100,000. So, they're going to address that in, in some manner in the budget, by allowing us to, to make a decision on that then.
To, to make revisions to the current budget or for the upcoming budget?
No, no, the upcoming, now. When we look in March to what they'll have to move forward with.
I think the $100,000 will hold us over until we get to the new budget.
July 1st.
Yeah, July 1st, and then we'll have that, yeah.
Yep. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. And nine.
I move to set a public hearing on Tuesday, February 9th, 2016, at 7:00 PM, in the Town Council chambers, to amend Chapter 176 Taxation of the Town Code.
Second.
Kathy?
As you know, this is just setting the public hearing. You'll have more information at the next meeting, but in, in summary, our Town Council goal states that we were to look at amending Chapter 176. We have done a thorough review of it, and what we're, what we are proposing is adding three new, three new articles and updating two existing articles. The two existing articles are the elderly tax credit and the veterans' tax credit, and if you remember, John, from way back when, that's what you had asked for, so there, there's updating those two, and then also some, we're amending some, recommending amending for two articles that have to do with excess payments.
Questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. And 10.
I move to set a public hearing on Tuesday, February 9th, 2016, at 7:10 PM, in the Town Council chambers, to amend Chapter 83 Building Construction of the Town Code.
Second.
Kathy?
What this, we're, again, we're going to have a public hearing, we'll have more information at that time, but the building inspector and the tax collector have recommended that we add a new section to our building construction that basically states that if a resident or doesn't pay, a resident or a business, that they don't pay their taxes or their sewer charge, then the town is not going to issue a building permit until that happens. There, we are able to do that by state law, but it needs to be stated in our own ordinance. There is a caveat there that basically says that the building inspector does have the authority, that if he feels that it's an emergency or something along those lines, he can issue the permit.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. And 11.
I move that the Town Manager and Town Treasurer be authorized to enter into a lease financing agreement with Delage Landon Public Finance LLC for the leasing of 28 golf carts for the Westwood's Golf Course.
Second.
Kathy?
This is, again, to start a new lease for $19,919 per year, for, is it, for the next five years. We have done this in the past, and we feel that leasing the golf carts are the best way to go, and Joe and the staff has reviewed the proposals and are recommending that we go with this group.
And by staff, do you mean people at Westwood's? You've talked with them.
They were involved in it, yes.
Okay. Any questions?
What's the cost of a typical golf cart?
Joe, what's the cost of the typical golf cart?
Well, between $20,000 and $25,000, depending upon what you want to get with it.
And how many years until it starts to cost more to keep it?
We hold them for five years, and then we turn them back. So we actually, we never actually buy them. We lease finance them, and then, after the fifth year, we turn them back to the company.
This makes sense.
With that, normal wear and tear is probably minimal cost each year, a couple of hundred dollars. Damage to carts is probably more expensive. You could run, we've had anywhere between $400 and $1,200 in damage. Somebody flips a car, somebody smashes into something, that runs between $400 and $1,200. So, we do put up a, a maintenance policy on, pay about $300 per month for maintaining the standard maintenance on the carts.
Other questions?
Do we only have 28 golf carts?
Yes, we, we have 28 all the time.[1599.15]